Ready?
Yep, I'm so, I'm so sorry about that everyone.
Are the mics on?
Yes.
All right, sorry about the delay, everybody like to welcome everybody to our number 2024 Board of Bruce Township Board, brand new newly elected order trustees, like to welcome Dorothy Solkowitz and Dave Vincent to the board. Roxanne, thanks for taking the minutes. And Tree Samery Voice, thanks for definitely playing for us on this case today. Can we do roll call news?
Supervisor.
Here.
Treasurer DeGiorgio.
Here.
Clerk Craft.
Here.
Trustee Solkowitz.
Here.
Here.
Stand with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everybody get an opportunity to take a look at the consent agendas or any deletions or additions? Anybody left to me? We have a couple deletion. I'd like to delete the parks, the greens, 6B green space on Prospect Street. They said they needed a little bit more time to give some more data to add together. Looking forward to hearing what they got to say. And then, planning, water and sewer rate study, we're going to remove that until I have more time to work on it. So that would be seven A, so we'll remove them two items.
I'd like to add intern help during tax season.
To H?
Yeah, H.
Is there anything else?
Jay was a friend.
You're all? Do we have to add them all?
No, just. I guess we have to add all these because we all had to be reed.
So is that generated? Make it eight. Hi?
Yeah.
Plan is only going to be in PC and AD.
Oh yeah. So what else? Why don't you put the one down? Because you already have that one down, so we had that one for this, so one, two, three, four, five, six items. So we should probably do each one individually because they all have different options.
Well, it's not doing eight eyes, probably eight eyes.
Ed Building Department Supervisor, E.I. J. Ordinance Enforcement Officer, H.K. Planning and zoning Administrator, L. Planning Commission Board Representative, M. Planning Commission Administrator, and FOIA Administrators.
There's the next thing. I just plan on zoning.
I threw it all the way down.
Anything else? Any make a motion to approve this amendment?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support?
Support.
Not by Dorothy, not by Giorgio. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call for Roxanne?
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Supervisor DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Treasurer DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Trustee Solkowitz?
Yes.
So this time, we're going to move on to item number four, which is comments from the floor. So if you would like to make a comment, we'd prefer that you come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and we would prefer you keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes, please.
Tree Smith from Covered Bridge, I just want to say welcome to the new trustees and congratulations. I wish you well.
Paul Wolkenyevsky, 71970, last year of Bruce Township. Two weeks, well, first of all, for transparency, I represent a consortium of Bruce Township residences, businesses, and farmers that are very concerned about the future of our township. Two weeks ago, I attended the planning commission meeting and they started to review the master plan. Just to review the master plan, it's a key document that drives our community current and future so we don't become a megopolis like Stroling Heights or even Washington Township. The last master plan, according to the presentation at the planning commission, and I took pictures of the presentation, the last master plan was adopted in 2016 after a year and a half of hard work to align all the ordinances and everything within the master plan and all our policies and procedures. That plan was updated in 2018 to match the water and sewer districts. It was then reviewed and reaffirmed in 2021. So the next real review of the master plan shouldn't be until 2026. It's not due for another two and a half years, so why are we looking at it early? Well, the next bullet answers that question. The planning commission and board members decided to update focus on industrial and commercial land and uses prompted by a sharp rise in rezoning requests and site plans by developers. So it seems that we're reviewing the master plan to suit the developers. Okay? Now, two of the key questions here is does the township have an appropriate amount of land zoned for industrial and commercial development? Again, that's answered in your own presentation where it says there are currently 200 open and plus open acres that are currently zoned industrial and commercial that have not yet been developed. And you guys want to add more? All right, the next one is the location of the land that is zoned for industrial or commercial use appropriate. Yes, it's in the water sewer district, the majority of it, and that's where it should be, and that's the way the master plan was created. So I had been called a liar during the campaign, and even worse. And the truth is coming out in your own presentations of the planning commission and the master plan review. So we'll just have to let the voters and the people, the residents, watch the meetings and review those, what's going on with the planning commission on the review of the master plan. It should not be changed for developers, and y'all stated that that's not what was happening. But two weeks ago, it started. And you need to remind the planning commission that the comments at the beginning, just like this meeting, are for items not on the agenda, and that the public has the right to ask questions at each agenda item during the meeting. That is their right. So we're going to be keeping close eye on this master plan review, guys, and we're going to hold you accountable.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Made a comment? The reason why they're looking at the master plan is because our previous administration gave up a lot of our industrial corridor and had it rezoned to residential. I mean, almost like 200 acres, if you look at Cloverfield, that was industrial. If you look at 170 apartments that we're going to have, that was industrial. And also not to say it in a wrong way because I love Orchard Grove, but that was industrial. Don't come back up, Paul.
I'm coming back up because Mike.
Sit back down.
You keep blaming the previous administration, yet the supervisor of the previous administration backed you for office.
Paul, if you don't sit down, we're going to adjourn the meeting until you do cooperate, and if you don't want to cooperate, we'll have the authorities.
But you're lying right now to the people.
It is not. This is a fact that this was rezoned under your administration as a planning commissioner and a board member. So it's factual information.
That's a lie, and everybody's watching.
Anybody can come here and see it. I don't have to say a word. They can look at the paperwork themselves. I'm done speaking. Thank you. There's no other public comment. We'll close the public comment and move on to our agenda. Thank you. Um, hearings and reviews, since we have no hearings or reviews, we'll move to presentations with item 6A, our Parks and Rec, uh, creation, Parks and Recreation's Corral Review. Clara and Treasurer.
Hi.
Hi, Claire.
Hi. Clara Russell, I'm the Parks and Recreation Department Director and Star Transportation Director. I'm here for our quarterly report. I think you all have a copy of it. Our financials, our budget balance this year at $2.7 million. Plus, the commission decided to add an additional $750,000 out of our fund balance that we were putting towards projects that we are working on. The millage collected was $1.9 million. Our fund balance, it shows on the front sheet, was at $4 million, where it also shows the breakdown. We have assigned funds of $1.25 million for future development and use for Parks and Recreation. We have restricted funds for, to go towards a playground for donated funds of $15,000. We have funds set aside for operations from April through December until our tax monies come in of $1.5 million, as well as the 750 that I talked about. Plus, we have an additional $581,000 that can be set aside for projects. Our maintenance and our facility, our parks maintenance and our facility maintenance are a big part of our budget. You could see the graph there. We have seven community parks that we maintain, 24 ball fields, including soccer. We work with five parent volunteer groups, including two soccers, baseball, girls softball, football. We have two sites that we maintain, and we run community activities as well as senior activities out of both of those sites. Right now, you can see that we are moving and spending money. This is just through the end of August. So we've had a lot of development, more than we had anticipated, which is a good thing because we've been on hold and the commission really is moving forward with maintenance projects as well as development projects, which we'll go through in a second. But first, I wanted just to talk about our programs a little bit. Right now, our programs, it looks like they are losing money, but it goes up and down as the programs or as the seasons go through. However, our summer programs were outstanding this year, and most of that was due to the fact that the weather was outstanding, so we had no canceled concerts or anything like that. We work with the Romeo Community School sports teams. We run camps for the kids, the coaches and the kids and the football teams and all of the teams come in. They run the sport programs. The kids love it. The funds, some of the funds go to the school program so that they can put those towards their athletic, they use those as their fundraisers, and it helps us offer them to the schools. We did a junior firefighter camp, which was a big hit this summer. We've hired a new top program supervisor. We've had a farm day. We did ventriloquist shows, lots of park activities. I think you saw a lot of activities out here. We did our Halloween activity. It's just we've had a really good year, and we're looking forward to a lot more activities coming forward, so. If you go forward, one of the other things that we did is during COVID, we kind of backed off, sending our brochure out. It's 40 pages. We used to send it to all of the households. We stopped doing that for a while, and we did it all through the computer and through links. We found that that wasn't the best way. We noticed that people really, or had talked to us, and they really wanted the paper copy back. They really liked getting it. So the commission decided to give us permission to go back to the 40-page brochure. We send it directly to the houses of Romeo, Washington, Bruce, and we've had a really good reception with that happening again. So we'll be doing that one more time for winter, spring, which will be coming out right before Christmas. Um, our improvement in development, if you look right outside, hopefully you guys have noticed, we did the, we connected the track at Bruce Township, so it's a complete circle now all the way around. We did a parking lot in Washington Township at the Gilcher Park. We're adding fencing, electric lights, and some cameras because that was one of our most vandalized parks, so we're starting there. We did the pickleball courts. We added four designated pickleball courts at the Washington Township Park, and then we resurfaced the two tennis courts that are there. So they're designated tennis courts. Again, we did the walking path, as well as we added the small parking lot here and resurfaced the entire existing walking path that is here. And then at Orchard Hills Park, we fixed the drainage and the culvert up front. So those are just some of the examples of the things that are happening. I think there's pictures if you go through. I just put pictures in there so that you can see. Romeo Community Center, we are adding an accessible glider, which is for families and persons with disabilities. It's a huge glider that you can get on. Wheelchairs fit on it. Families fit on it. So it'll be a nice accent. The Qantas have donated monies towards it. So we're looking forward to that. That will be more early spring by the time that it gets here and installed. So we definitely are looking forward to that. So that is really the main thing about Parks and Recreation. But skipping over to STAR. If you're not familiar with STAR, it's our essential service for seniors and persons with disabilities. It's free transportation. Monday through Friday, we take people for medical appointments in and out of the district. We do general shopping and errands in the tri-community area. We do group shopping trips offered monthly to out-of-district stores. All anybody has to do is call our office. We set up a card with all of your information, and then you just call, and we set up appointments through advance reservations, and we come, pick you up, take you where you need to go, come, pick you up, and take you home. So it's a great service. It provides independence, which is so important to anybody if you're not able to drive or if you are, um, maybe just don't want to drive. So all you have to do is call us, and we'll get that going for you. STAR is budgeted at $809,000. The millage collected for STAR is $658,000. We have $650,000 set aside for future emergency operating funds. We want to save two years just in case our millage ever doesn't go through or Smart's millage ever doesn't go through because we want to make, part of the money that we get to run STAR is through the Smart Millage. So we want to make sure if Smart Millage didn't ever go, that we would have enough money to pay for additional vehicles because Smart does give us the vans and buses that we have. We purchase the vehicles, but we would need to make sure that we could operate without those funds and without those vehicles. So we are slowly building up that two-year fund. We have other money set aside for future development projects and as well as the operation funds from April through December until the taxes are collected, so. Other things that we're doing with STAR is we are with the overhang at the community center. We would like to add additional bays because we did receive additional van and additional bus from Smart, so we need to cover those. And then we'd also like to add additional parking lots so that we can park the cars that we have for STAR. We have 13 vehicles. The cars that we have, like I said, the community buys those through the millage, normally through a grant program that Smart helps us go through. Smart, however, as I said, buys the, or gives us the vans and the buses, and then also they maintain the vans and the buses for us. Unless it's an accident or something and it needs to be a body work that has to be done, then we have to take it to somewhere else, but they maintain all of that. So the Smart money that goes to the millages does come back to us. I want to just make sure that I put a good word out there for Smart because that money, or one-third of the money that we use to run STAR, comes from them. So can't say enough about them. I think I put some stats in there. We are continuously growing monthly on our riders. Sorry, I lost my sheet of paper. Nope, not going to be able to find it, but.
Eighty-one disabled riders and 455 monthly disabled trips.
Does it show you the amount from last year?
I think you're up 1,000.
Up 1,000 riders, yeah. Thank you. I don't know where that sheet is. But, oh, okay. But really, STAR, we took when, you know, through COVID, besides the fear and everything, it came back slow, and people are feeling, our residents and our users are really feeling more comfortable in coming out, and people are becoming more familiar with STAR, and I think they're using it more. And again, the independence that people have and can use this service is just, it's so vital. So our numbers are just continuing to grow, and normally you don't use 100% of your vehicles, but we are just, we've just been so busy, so that's a good thing. But that's really all unless you have any questions for me. Yes.
Orchard Hills, these little circles, does that indicate where the lights are going in that car?
That is.
Guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Is that funding for the light that's going to come from GT and front?
Yes.
And install, and we just have to pick for the names and.
Yes.
Which is a good thing.
And this is Kim Duda. She's our treasurer.
Hi, Kim Duda. I'm a Washington Township resident and treasurer of Parks and Rec and Star Commission. I'm going to go through the reconciliation report just briefly. As you can see from the report for Parks and Recreation, the assets and the liabilities are balanced at $3,455,200. 200, I'm sorry, 4 million, or I'm sorry, $3,455,252.35. One thing I want to point out on the reconciliation report is that under the PNC money market, you'll see that we had $10,000 of interest earned as of August 30th. That was due to us creating the, the money market account, which is earning interest at a 5% interest rate. That was established back in June, and it was late June, early July that monies were put into that account and started earning interest. So as of, as of the end of August, we earned $24,840 on that. So this particular account is growing. The interest is growing, and that's something that we're pretty proud of. That was a new thing that we implemented in order to invest the funds that were sitting in just a general checking account. And then same report for STAR Transportation. Our funds balance at $1,360,079.07. Same thing there with the money market. The interest earned was $2,955.84. But for the collaboration of the three months, that total is $11,014.34. So again, something that we're proud of there. And just to give an update on some of the other things that we're working on, we have selected Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union as our investment partner. We have also established an investment committee that has already met once last month. We'll be having another meeting tomorrow, and it's our hope that we can finalize a plan for investing the funds that are sitting in our money markets and checking accounts. And the primary goal with that is, one, investing the funds, but also ensuring the funds as well, ensuring that they're safe because at this point, there is a lot of money sitting in those accounts that isn't necessarily insured. So that is the primary goal. So we're hoping to have that taken care of in the next month or so. The audit was also completed back in September for Parks and Rec and STAR, which I did participate in, and that will be presented to us by the CPA firm tomorrow in our commission meeting. And the last thing that I'd like to report on is that we are still working on the rent agreements with both the village and Washington Township. It is my understanding that Washington Township has had their lawyers draw up an agreement, which we have not seen yet, but as soon as we do, we'll definitely report on that. As far as the village of Romeo goes, I did just receive an email. I read it this morning, but it came in yesterday, that the president met with their board yesterday, and they've decided that they don't want to change the agreement at this point in time. So we do need to reach out to our attorneys to determine what needs to happen next because I know there was a concern with the townships being on the hook for any long-lasting rental agreements. And in that particular case, it's a 99-year agreement, which we have, you know, close to 50 years still remaining on that. So I will definitely keep you informed on that as well. So unless you have any questions, concerns, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Your meeting tomorrow is at Washington Township. That started at 6 o'clock. If anybody wants to attend?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Almost move on to item eight. I'm sorry, seven. Seven A because green spaces are. So yeah, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is on, so 7C, would you like to block out?
So we're out of block hours, and I have this proposal for 25 to 500 hours. We don't have anything in the works right now with this other sheet that I gave you. If you open up and look on the inside, you see that we have several of our computers passed warranty in the red zone here, and we had to, he's going to come next month and kind of over this with us. But in anticipation of having to at least update some of these, we're going to block out for that. And we always need block hours, but that is something that, I mean, all those replacements and the time it will take to install and fix that line.
Seems like we can get block hours on our phones. When was the last time we purchased block hours? And I thought there was some kind of law over the end of that.
Yeah, well, they all, they don't expire, so I remember Mike was here because he suggested the higher amount.
Back in July, it looks like we did 100, there was 100 hours that were banked, and I know they were doing some server work.
Yeah, a lot of server work.
And then the last time that I could see was eight, was January 2023. It looked like we bought 50 hours.
Yeah, but I saw that longer.
I bet I, you know, that was 2023, it was there. I couldn't find them.
Back in July, we bought 100 hours.
Right.
We split that. We did 1640. I don't recall where it was. We've gone through the 100 hours.
Because I know they had some server work, and it looks like we're in a deficit of 10 hours on top.
Well, at the top, it says you are about 10 overdrawn currently.
I knew we were out.
Yeah.
So.
Is that because of the transition of Duo and 365?
It's a combination of a lot of them. I can't tell you specifically, he's not here, so.
Is that what they should be responsible for either? I'm thinking they should have been responsible for some of it. I mean, there was just issue after issue converting. I mean, on the other end, you get charged for block hours, I don't know, because we got to go back and look, but 100 hours.
There was 100 that was allocated.
Right, so you're saying we're heading the hole now, so.
I don't know how many were used then, yeah.
In five months, plus five months. But prior to that, you said, Dorothy, you said 20.
It looked like January of 2023, we bought 50 hours. When I searched the minutes, that was the last time I could see other than 500 hours.
Right, but we had, I don't know, we've made a lot of approvals. I mean, we're getting computers, we're upgrading software, there's a lot of things that we're collecting, you know, that we are upgrading, and it just.
And you're still doing it, right?
And we're still doing it.
Yeah.
You know, I'm still doing it. There's still internet issues, there's still conductivity issues, we're working on it. But my feeling on that was that a lot of it was on their end, not on our end.
I agree with you. If they were having problems on their end, we should be charged.
With Duo, that's different than High Tech.
Well, they rolled out the Duo and the 365. I mean, literally back and forth, emails, phone calls, I was inundated almost daily for weeks on end. How is that our, you know, they're the professionals, they're supposed to roll it out, they're supposed to take care of it. I'm just wondering if we pay for a lot of those glitches. And I get it, I understand, things happen. But on our end, it was a very difficult transition.
I agree.
We should have asked him before we made the call.
I know, I'm throwing it out there.
We can still maybe talk to them about that and maybe get some credit hours, do what they have in commentators, or we still need to purchase some block hours, I guess.
Yeah.
But it is, seems like, I mean, we burned 200 hours pretty quick.
We got a July opinion on this, because I know we're going to discuss it. I'm okay with whatever you decide, I'll go forward because we took the Duo as a group. Maybe we just do it our way. We're only saving $20 an hour if we put up $7,500 immediately. So do we know if we're going to have that need? Do we need the 70, you know, the 50 hours, the 100 hours?
Well, it doesn't expire, so we'll always be able to use it. And if we do have to have to work on it, we'll probably. What?
Last time we ever, for some reason, using it.
Oh, but not losing it?
We didn't lose it, I don't think we lost it. You know, according to this list, it looks like 90% of the computers need to be updated.
Yeah.
They do.
Right.
Especially on our, which I've been working on.
So we have a lot of time.
You know, I would tend to go higher than lower if the money's available. Because there's a 20% savings to go to 500 hours, and if they don't expire, I would tend to prefer that.
I think we're running out, but I.
Our budget came in a lot.
I think she thought that we could do it.
100 hours. 100 hours we could probably absorb, and I don't recall what we did last time, if we did a 50/50, or 60/40, or 70/30. You know, there was a split. Figure it out then. Guess I'll make motion five, and crew, 100 hours of block hours from High Tech, as presented.
It's part.
We have another discussion. As long as you tell me what break down, I'll go through it. Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I thought it would be 50/50, but you're saying it wasn't. I don't, I don't think it was.
No, I don't think it was either.
60/40, or maybe even 70/30.
Right, something like that.
I'm okay with it, because it's a 14, it's 14,500. We will figure it out, and I do need some support coming up. As long as we.
Whatever it was the last time, I'm sure they haven't changed it.
I just don't recall what it was. It was a while ago.
Well, he'll be here next month, so if you have any questions, we can talk about what needs to be placed.
Just going to make the call to see if we can get some credit with how issues we are having.
I can ask him, he'll be here next month, so you can ask him too. I wrote it down.
And we got motion to support for higher than a block hours from High Tech, and there's another discussion, we may get a rule call to get it signed.
Uh, trustee Zellman?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert?
Yes.
Chris Kraft?
Yes.
And Judge DeChu?
Yes.
And trustee Benson?
Yes.
Motion clear. So move on to item 7C, our internal control review.
As soon as you all remember that this was on last month's agenda, this would be our auditors looking at our procedures and giving us a kind of a review. How we can maybe, how we're working, and how we can work better. Apparently, apparently, who's the expert within that firm on this kind of thing. We're trying to reevaluate. I think this might be the time to look over our, how we do things. And they take, they go to each department, talk to each department, see how we operate, who takes in what, who pays what, handles.
Is there a purpose for this all to say, I mean, we have resources in here, we have people.
No, just because I thought they, they, it was a lot of direct, I don't know. But just to help us, because we're all, our safety is about who can take what money. We're not supposed to take money off, so I don't know if that's true or not, we're told that by the other, by last treasurer, so things like that.
It just seems like, Ken, there's a lot of money here, it's a $6,000.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we can't hear you guys at all.
Oh, really?
I thought it was just me.
And Susan, Mike, pull it up a little closer.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, Mike and Susan, she's not picking up the up.
She's got to turn them off a little bit, they got a little.
We can hear the other ones.
Yeah, we can hear, I can hear that, Susan. Sorry. No, you're good.
So.
Hi. This was a recommendation.
Personally, I think, you know, that's what we have MTA for, to give them a call. If we have questions, and they can answer pretty much anything, anytime you call them. And also, I don't think it would hurt any of us to go do some benchmarking with other municipalities. I mean, I just went to Lenox not too long ago, a few months ago. Lenox Township is very, very similar to our township. I think they maybe have maybe 1,500 or 2,000 more people. And they seem to run pretty smoothly over there. I don't know, I just don't, I don't think we've had real, and then again, too, this all hinges on what they're being told. And, you know, if you don't give them honest answers, you're just going to get us, you know, a report that's not.
I wouldn't give them honest answers.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just pointing out here that that's what it says, that everybody has to cooperate with what they're being, you know, what they're being asked.
Well, I thought especially in your office, it might be helpful, and you can't meet somebody who can come across the hall and what.
Well, actually, we do. I mean, at least, there's a couple employees, I don't want to use names, that it is in their, it is in their job description that they take payments from the treasurer's office when needed. And talking to other municipalities, there's nothing wrong with anybody from any office taking a payment.
Well, that's.
They just can't process it, or, you know, they can't commingle together. Anybody from accounting and the treasurer's office cannot do functions of work in each other's department. So in other words, our assistant accountant can't come over here and come into treasurer's office and reconcile our bank statements in the treasurer's office. Nor can treasurer office go to accounting and do the same thing. As far as taking a payment, they can take a payment.
Some more reasons why we would want to be looking at this, are we taking a payment?
I just said I'd bring it to you, so.
Is there any?
It's a whole process, Michael, how we, how we interact, how we take in, how we pay things, how we. I'm not sold on it, I'm just brought up for conversation, so.
$6,000. If you didn't tell us, it would seem to be a hard to figure it out, but.
You know, I mean, that's where I, that's my struggle, is the $6,000, that's a lot of money.
You don't need a motion to, motion table, Susan?
No, it doesn't like, it didn't even last, so it just got off my note.
So no action on it?
Something that can be brought back, if you decide.
I just thought with the transition.
Yeah. Maybe when the person comes in, you can.
So no action on it, so we see the internal control. Move on to item 8A, which is our accounting manager position, or business.
Kind of argues. I slipped on that one, because I was going to announce it around this meeting, but I just did, so. She's leaving, and by next month, they should have some ideas for us.
That's at the end of December.
Well, we're done, yes, well, we're done for the holidays. So quite the end. She's contractual, so that's what allows her to.
Well, while we're on the subject, again, I went to Lenox not too long ago, and they have population that's just as big as Bruce Township. And they're, in their accounting department, they only have one person that does accounting work, pretty much what our assistant accountant does. And their accountant, they have an accountant that comes in once every two weeks, two hours each time, that's four hours a month. And all they do is make sure that the accountant is putting all the money in the right buckets. And that's it.
Well, as a matter of fact, that's one of the things I'm going to look into, is bringing something in once a week. So that's why I'm saying I'll have something ready for next month.
So we're just, is there a motion we need to make that we're going to put this job out for?
No.
Posting it along?
No.
Because I believe our assistant accountant can handle the job. I mean, she does a great job.
Craig, do you know what the job entails? Have you seen the job?
I have, I've looked at her job description.
Not hers, and Rhonda's job is, which are very different. They're very different.
Okay.
And I'll have that for you Tuesday.
Will they get you through to the end of the year with payroll and everything that needs to get done?
So Susan, what happened after that?
After what?
First of the year.
Well, I hope to have something before then. I already have something to do payroll, that's everybody's main concern.
Okay, we'll move on then. Item 8B, which is the cross FOIA appeal, Lisa Cross is here.
Hello. So you've already been submitted with detailed information regarding my appeal, and I would like to summarize a few items.
Closer. Is Riley, you got to try to walk a little bit higher or not?
It's so long, it's like stuck in my face.
You can hear it, because you got headphones on, but what about everybody else?
Leave it there, I mean.
I don't hear anything with the mics at all.
Talk really loud?
She's around her mic, but they're not on the PA for some reason.
Yeah, because we can't hear you guys back there, it's really hard.
Are both amps on over there, Dana? Is the amp on?
Do you have a green light?
Power on in the black box to your left.
Please would you use the green light?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all lit up.
This part's on, is the amp on?
Everybody just has to talk really loud.
Really loud shout. Should I continue?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm appealing my FOIA request from August 15th of '24, because it was only partially fulfilled. There are two items that I have not received. One is the refusal of the party named in the FOIA request to submit information, and two, the refusal of the electronic copy of a requested letter. Regarding item number one, several people were named in the FOIA request, and I received information from everyone except Amy Krieger. Several documents that I received had her name included. Therefore, my request should have included records from her as well, and prove she has correspondence pertaining to this FOIA, but has not submitted the information. The township attorney's brief states that the township is not required to provide duplicates. This statement is not accurate, as I'm not asking for duplicates. My issue is not receiving any information at all from the individual. It is not known if Amy's information would all be duplicated or not, since no information was provided. Emails show the FOIA coordinator, Susan Kraft, never answered my question when I asked, does Amy have documentation regarding this FOIA? She responded only that my FOIA is complete. I do not understand why she would not answer the question and only gave an evasive response dismissing my inquiry. My FOIA is not complete because Amy Krieger has withheld documents. She's named in the FOIA and is required to disclose the information I have requested. Amy has failed to comply with this FOIA, and I request that these documents be released. Item number two, I also requested an electronic copy of a letter dated September 18th of '23, and only received a paper copy. This letter is on township letterhead and is signed by the accounting manager, Rhonda Ricketts, the township clerk, Susan Kraft, and the deputy clerk, Amy Krieger. The Freedom of Information Act requires the disclosure of all public records, which includes electronic records. This is confirmed by the attorney's brief on page three. If public records exist in electronic or digital format and are not exempt from disclosure, they must be produced. In my email to Susan, I asked if she is refusing to send me the Word doc of this letter. Her response, as I stated in my request, it is complete. She again, never answered my question. It was only after the union rep from TPOAM also asked for this same letter in electronic format, that Susan told him that the file now does not exist. She never told me in any prior communication that this file does not exist. Why was this never communicated to me? The history of this letter and its disappearance is very suspicious. The attorney's brief states on page four, receiving further inquiry from Ms. Cross, Clerk Kraft inquired of Rhonda Ricketts whether or not a Word doc of this letter existed. She was informed that it does not exist, as it was deleted once the letter was printed and placed in the file. I find it hard to believe that the accounting manager would delete a payroll record. This letter shows that Susan Kraft approved an unauthorized increase without board or union approval, increasing Amy Krieger's pay $4,222. This is a significant increase and is also a payroll record. Rhonda is the accounting manager and would be aware that this document should be saved. Her contract states, all Bruce Township information shall be stored at Bruce Township facilities and Bruce Township computers, and is the sole and exclusive property of Bruce Township. Why would the payroll document be deleted? Deleting a document goes against Rhonda's contract, so if this is what actually occurred, then I would question what other records have been deleted. On October 7th, per the attorney brief, Clerk Kraft contacted the township's IT professionals, High Tech, to attempt to retrieve the file. I questioned the validity of the search. What was High Tech asked to look for and where? Also, what was done to try and retrieve this document? This document could be a Word doc, a PDF, and it is not known on which computer it was created. I believe this was a feeble attempt to try and retrieve the letter. Susan signed the letter, and since she is directly involved, I respectfully request that another board member inquire further into this matter. I believe a thorough search has not been conducted. If further inquiry with High Tech cannot produce the file, then I request a forensic audit be conducted to retrieve this file. The township must demonstrate a diligent search for the requested electronic document before claiming it does not exist. It is very apparent to me that information regarding my FOIA request is deliberately being hidden by either not giving it to me or deleting requested electronic documents. I'm asking the board to look into this issue and do what is necessary to get me the requested information. So today I was given some new information from Susan. Susan had High Tech search Amy's emails. This morning, Susan handed me a packet of papers stating that they were all of Amy's emails from High Tech's search. I looked through the emails and found three that should have been given to me with the other FOIA documents I received back in August. Previous emails that I received from the FOIA request had Amy's name included, as I have stated, and those emails were not part of the paperwork I received today. Susan stated that these were all of Amy's emails, but if they were, they would have included these previous missing documents. In my opinion, it would have been very easy to delete information before Hitek did their search or eliminate documents completely from what was given to me today. This again shows complete information is not being given to me. Why was I not given these documents before? And is additional evidence that Amy does have information regarding this FOIA and has claimed she does not? And again, is why I'm asking another board member to investigate this matter. Thank you.
Question for Bob? Can she request another board member do a forensic, or request a forensic, what is your thoughts?
Kristi Anderson drafted a letter to the Township Board that the board members should have in front of them, and just at the outset, that letter should have rested with the board only. The individual that's appealing the FOIA request apparently has and should not have the attorney-client privilege correspondence that was sent from our office to the Township Board. So in the future, it's not clear to me how she would have received that letter, because when our offices Township Attorneys send a letter to the Township Board, they are privileged, which means it remains for board members' eyes only. Their legal opinions, and they are to go no further than that. Which has nothing, of course, to do with FOIA, but we have some new board members and I want to make that absolutely crystal clear, that they are for your eyes only. There are really two sets of documents that the individuals requesting. The FOIA request is completely legitimate, it meets the test of FOIA. The obligation for the FOIA coordinator upon receipt of a request is to determine whether or not the FOIA request adequately describes a public record that is not otherwise exempt. The records that she is requesting are not exempt from disclosure, so if they exist, they have to be produced. They are at, they are clearly described, and so, once a determination is made whether or not the documents exist, if they are found, they have to be produced to the request. In this particular case, there were one set of documents, which were emails to and from Ms. Krieger, that apparently had not originally been produced. That's my understanding. The individual, again, I wasn't, I don't have firsthand personal knowledge, but based on what I understand, indicated that they don't exist. Hitek originally did a search, the search revealed that the doc, that there were emails to and from the individual, those have to be produced, and it's my understanding that the Township clerk has now produced those documents. So that should, that should not be arguable. They either exist or they don't. If your IT consultant has done the search and they have produced all the documents in your system that are to and from that individual, that should add that, add that portion of the appeal. With respect to the electronic version of a document, FOIA does define public record as either a document that is in paper or electronic form, and if it exists in two separate formats, you have to produce both. Paper version was produced, which is consistent with FOIA and satisfies your obligation. It is my understanding that the Township clerk directed Hitek to do a search of your system to determine whether or not the electronic version of the paper letter exists, and correct me Susan if I'm wrong, that Hitek determined that the document does not exist. Now, they're an independent consultant that you hire, and I'm authorized tonight to do an additional hundred hours of work for you. They're a consultant, like your auditor, your planner, your lawyer, your engineer, and you directed them to do the search, and they're saying the document doesn't exist. An individual requesting public records does not have the right to have a forensic audit done by the Township Board. This isn't a lawsuit, this is, this is a FOIA request, and if your consultant's done the search and the document doesn't exist, the response to the FOIA request is, "The document does not exist, period." And that should be the end. So your decision tonight is either to affirm what the FOIA coordinator, the clerk's office, did by way of production, or reverse it, but if Hitek is determined that the document doesn't exist, there's nothing to reverse. If, if you want to spend taxpayer money to hire a forensic audit of this system to produce an electronic version of a document that your, your IT company says doesn't exist, that's on you, but it's not required by FOIA at all. And I can tell you from experience, a forensic auditor of a computer system is very expensive. I have used them in litigation before, and they are extremely expensive. You want to do it, it's on your dime, but that's got nothing to do with this FOIA request. So, as I see it, your decision is fairly easy. You produce the paper copies, you had your consultant review the documents, you produce what you have, it's game over. But, that's your board decision.
Did you see the three other documents you have copies from somebody else with the aim?
Can we show you? So the documents I received today from Susan, the marked ones in blue, which should have been something I would have received in the beginning and I never received until this morning. This is my FOIA. Everything in blue is correspondence that has Amy's name on it that I did not receive from Amy. So if this here was all of her emails, which is three, where are these if she's saying that these are all her emails?
How do we, she's obviously got paperwork that shows that there should be other documents or?
Well, she says she's got paperwork to show it. You gave it to your, your consultant to do the search.
And I gave them a copy of the FOIA request.
I understand that, but they had a copy of the FOIA request. I've seen thousands of these FOIA requests. Give me a copy of every email, text messages, paper documents between every board member over a certain period of time. Unless you have somebody on staff that's savvy enough to do it, you bring in your IT consultant, you show them the FOIA request, you lock them in a room, and they're done, and they come out with all these emails, and you put them in stacks and you produce them. It's that simple to do. You know, it's not rocket science to produce emails. I could tell my legal assistant at work to produce every single email to me and Mike Philbrook over the last eight years, and I could have them to you in and out. The system generates them. So if Hitek has said they've looked for them and they've produced every document that they have, what else are you going to look for?
Well, the ones that she says that she has and shows that there should be more that she had received.
Well, but how, who are you going to hire to do that?
Well, that's why we.
Well, the point is, is I'm saying is she never responded to the FOIA.
So your goal here is to, you're going after Amy then, because she didn't do something, you now have the documents whom, I don't understand what.
Well, I'm saying that she never responded to the FOIA, she said she had nothing. This proof she does, this proof she does.
Amy is not a public body. An employee is not a public body subject to FOIA. The Township of Bruce, a Michigan municipal corporation, is a public body that holds and generates records. Employees don't generate records that are, that are subject to FOIA. So if somebody got a FOIA request, if you got served with a FOIA request on the clerk, it said, "You clerk, I want you to produce this," not which is in the Bruce Township records, but which is in yours, it has to be a document that's held within the confines of the Township of Bruce. This employee is not subject to FOIA. When these FOIA requests come in for employee information, typically FOIA coordinator will send out, as Susan did, emails to the employees saying, "Dear five employees, we have had FOIA requests for documents back and forth between you, search your computers, produce them all," and it's usually a done deal. In this case, the individual that's requesting the documents takes issue with that, said the search wasn't adequate. You took the extra step and had your IT consultant go through and do it independent of the employees, and said, "This is what we found." What else would you want to do? I'm serious.
I mean, I think the only question, she's got, she's got documentation that shows that there are still emails that she didn't receive from the, from part of her FOIA request, and that's what she's, am I correct in saying? So, I mean.
Is this what comes with like her increase, Lisa? I mean, is that the issue, the increase?
I wanted to see, right, a history of what was happening and who said what, and.
And I asked her twice where to clarify who.
And I answered you twice.
Yes, she said to me, "Read my FOIA, reread it."
I said, "Reread the FOIA, I'm asking for all communications between all of the individuals." And then you sent it again, and I said the same thing, "I'm asking for all communication between all of the individuals."
Regarding Amy, or Bob, or you?
Correct.
So it was confusing, that's why I asked for clarification.
And I answered you.
You told me to reread it.
If you look at the email in front of you, I said, "Please reread the FOIA, and I want correspondence from all of the individuals, all correspondence regarding Amy, myself, or Bob." I didn't just tell you to reread it.
I mean, I'm not saying it the wrong way, but everybody else kind of understood, and we produced all of our emails that had any correspondence like that.
Correct.
For some reason, the one employee.
Right, so my point is also, is the electronic copy, it's, it's just disappeared. So, I'm requesting that another board member look into this, because you're the only point of contact and you're directly related.
So I had toys that had Hitek do it, two different people, two different times. They searched her computer. What she did, was she took the, our letterhead, she typed up her letter like we often do, and she didn't say that, she just printed it out. She has a hard copy, it's in the employee's personnel file. And when you asked for that, it doesn't say you wanted an electronic copy. You said for me to prove it, proof of the document, and the document is always proved.
Right, and then was, then correspondence from there was, "I wanted the Word doc or electronic form." So when Hitek was asked and called, which you were the only point of contact, and you said, "Search this," did you say a Word doc? Did you say a PDF on which computer?
Yes, they went through everything, even her cash, I don't know what that means even, so, and the second one was the boss of the first one, so he, first they went through Rhonda, they talked it through, and then when Rhonda wasn't here yesterday, I had to go into her computer and search.
Wouldn't you be able to tell, like through accounting, when that increase took place, separate from the letter, would that show exactly when?
Well, the point of the letter is, I don't believe the letter was written on the date that it's on the letter.
Right, so let's say it wasn't written on that date. Did that, does that affect when her increase was, you know, happened, or?
No, I don't know.
I don't understand, we were just asking. Because we weren't privy, I can't speak for Dave, but I don't know if there's a way to kind of come to some kind of an agreement with all of this. I know we've spent a lot of money on attorneys. Hitek Township hours, it shouldn't be rectified, but how do we get to that point, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So what is it, you, I mean, what is, I guess, what's the, the end game right now? I mean, you're not satisfied that all the papers, for one thing, have been produced by FOIA that you should be entitled to receive?
Correct.
And then, you did receive, you sent three documents, it shows that there should be three more documents you did not receive.
Well, there were three today, that I received, just today, that I never received before, and I don't understand how someone can say, "I don't have anything," and then, that was since August.
So you have them, not required to provide duplicates, so, so you have them, is what you're saying? And we don't need to provide you with duplicates?
But if you're telling me that Hitek searched everything of her computer, and these are all of her emails, why were these not included?
I gave them direction, I gave them the FOIA, and I let them do it. I didn't, I wasn't going to influence them, I just gave them.
Right, I'm just saying that that doesn't, this is not all her emails if all of these are not included in it, and how, and I don't even know what else is missing, so I just, none of this matches up, it doesn't make any sense. I just don't understand how you can, if I'm asking for a FOIA, how I'm not getting the information I've requested.
And I give you everything that I get.
When did you, how long is it been since you?
August.
We got them today?
I got, yeah.
And it was for like a stretch of a year, correct?
A little over a year, correct.
So if she deleted them, let's say, because she didn't think they were necessary, would you be able to find them, two years?
No, it was.
I thought it was a quote, almost a year, right? That you went back?
Um, I want to say it was a little over a year.
I mean, if you delete something from your emails, which she's at, then obviously she wouldn't have them, but they would find it.
They went through deleted stuff, too, that was all part of it.
They went through deleted as well.
Absolutely, yes.
So, I, I guess I have a question, I, I guess I see two issues here. One is the letter that you believe is, was written on a different date, that is being said that that is not available. And the other issue is, you received a packet of initial communications, but this morning you received additional communications that should have been in the original packet but weren't. Is that correct?
Correct.
You just received those this morning?
Yeah, these I just received this morning, this I received back in August, but I've never received anything from the one person that we talked about.
So when you received those in August, you were told that was everything?
Correct.
But then you received more communications this morning that weren't included when you were told you received everything?
Correct.
So now your question is, have you really received everything?
That's correct.
That you were told in August you received it, but now you got more?
Yes.
The difference is that Hitek went and did the second batch, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know why are we using this type of, to draw up our emails anyways? I mean, I go in and I search a certain name and it comes up in my history, I don't even know.
Because they can go and, if somebody doesn't, doesn't give an accurate account, they can go in and find out.
Has anybody ever asked why it wasn't safe to begin with?
Yes. You said that. She, she was her.
She saved a hard copy.
Yeah.
She didn't save it. If it's the same as when we used to do it, you have the letterhead, you typed out the letterhead, and then you printed it, cleared out the letterhead, because that was like a master, I don't think, I'm not saying that's what happened, but that's, that could have happened.
That's what she said.
And I don't know if it's.
I just don't understand why she would delete it at all, if that's according to her contract. She's supposed to keep everything on the Township computers, and it's a payroll record.
I can't answer, she's not here to answer.
It just seems very suspicious to me that this record is here. Originally, when I talked to Rhonda, she had no documentation regarding this issue. Few months later, we were at a meeting for the union, she produces this letter, now this letter is just gone.
How long are we going to go on with this, Lisa?
Well, I just thought, I'm on the agenda and it's my time to speak, so I thought we could talk about it.
No, I don't mean this specific issue, but you're dragging this out with Amy and just pumping.
Well, it wouldn't be dragged out if it was answered to begin with.
What are we talking about, Lisa?
If, if this was answered and I was given the documentation I requested from when I requested it, and not handed a big stack this morning, we wouldn't have to be dragging it out.
I, I should be attorney when we go in and ask Hitek to do this, because I have no way of knowing, somebody answers my, the FOIA when I send those out. I just send the, the example of FOIA, if they misinterpret it, or they miss something, that's why I had them do that, and I gave it to immediately as soon as I got it. I think I went above and beyond. It may have not been the answer you expected, the gotcha thing that you were expecting, but I, it's incomplete, so.
Communications with Hitek, all verbal, we've fallen over the email communications?
I can see some.
Okay, I see, I see this one, but the request, was that verbal request or email?
I think the first one was.
Isn't that?
Yeah, and I was talking to him yesterday, and I asked for this, and I asked him to put it in and write.
Because it would be good to know what they were originally asked to look for, to make sure that everything is complete. When they responded to you, did they respond in a, as a PDF document, or did they give you paper copies? Like of all of what they found, were their findings given to you as a PDF?
Yes, yeah.
So what, does she have the, the entire PDF at this point?
She, I just made copies of all the emails.
So, so is there more?
She has only the copy.
In the PDF, does she just have the emails, or does she have the, the entire PDF?
She has just the emails. I don't have a PDF, I just accessed, they accessed her emails and made copies.
And how did Hitek send those to you, this is my question?
By email.
Okay, so that would have been a.
And I just printed them off, and I just printed them off to keep them the record.
I assume it would have been a PDF document, you know, that contained all of the emails, I don't know exactly how they did it, just to, to make sure she is assured that she has everything. I guess that would be reasonable.
I'm just saying, I understand a forensic audit would be expensive. How about I request somebody else on the board, other than Susan, who was involved, can contact Hitek to make sure what she's saying is actually what happened, because I've got a lot of discrepancies here, and I just don't trust that that's valid information.
Well, everybody has an email here from Hitek saying exactly what it was and that it was completed.
It's very vague, per our conversation, Susan. So I agree with what Dave is saying, you know, if there's a PDF or something, or somebody else can verify and talk to Hitek and say, "What exactly did you look for?"
Did you get this and where? That we just, this is just today, but this was Tuesday.
Oh, I did not get that, no.
So when was it requested?
So when was it requested for High Tech to do that?
The first one was in October, and then the second one was Monday.
So they came in in October and did a search, and now they came in again and found more?
A month later? No, these are two different things. One is the search for Rhonda's, and the other is for, for the emails.
Does Susan argue the point of contact always for High Tech?
I am not, uh, even in our offices, but sometimes don't. But because of the situation, I...
Sure. So it seems like a reasonable request that, are you, were you including the original request?
No.
Any emails, text letters, communication from Amy, Susan, Rhonda, Subrock, Mendori? So you are a part of this, and I guess from an accountability standpoint, is the request reasonable that someone who is mentioned in here not be the point of contact? Would that be a reasonable request?
I would agree with that.
You know, I don't know how, what the solution is, if there's somebody else in the township that can be the point of contact, so Lisa's satisfied that it's someone independent of who is being looked into? You know, that seems to make sense.
Makes sense.
What do you think, Bob? It's really ridiculous, I know.
That's, that's entirely the board's decision. I mean, if you, essentially what you're asking is, should there be a redo? And if you want to do it again?
For the third time?
And have a point, and have a point person conduct another search from scratch, have at it. At the end?
That's your call to me.
Make a motion to deny the cross FOIA appeal.
I'd like to know what the... I mean, I'm not saying it the wrong way, but I have to agree with her, because she asked you time and time and time again for documents that were never, ever given to her, when she had proved that there were documents that were, were there, that she should have received back in September.
Why are you yelling? Well, I was going to say, it's not Susan requested them, and she was only, she provided what she was given.
Asking over and over again, so I get where she's coming and where she's at, and I, I get that she has a doubt in our credibility as, as a board for the information she's requesting. And finally, as of this morning, she got them, after being requested back in September.
I think pay stubs were also an issue too, that were being requested for a period of time, quite a long period of time, and never produced.
We gave up pay stubs a long time ago, Frank.
Yeah, you did, after how many weeks of requests, three emails after?
You had a FOIA request for that?
No, not FOIA request, the union was requesting pay stubs, and they sent you three emails, and you finally responded after.
Frank, that's a totally different thing.
I'm just, I'm just to her point of what she's saying.
There were two elections during this time.
I know that, I take that into consideration, Susan.
Obviously.
But, you know, you made a point how we've already spent $25,000 on this, it's ridic, I totally agree, it's ridiculous. Let's get to where it all started. That's why we're here, and it's, it shouldn't be here if it wasn't for what transpired in September of 23.
We corrected that, Frank, and yet we keep going back and forth on this.
So basically, right now, Lisa, what your request is just to, to ask the board, we would do a forensic audit, or produce the...
I requested a forensic audit, or if another board member would take and talk to High Tech, look at this, what was done, does it look like the search was complete, was there anything else that could have been done? I just feel Susan's directly involved, and I'm not convinced I'm getting everything I'm asking for.
So...
I don't think it should be Frank or Mike, you know, you guys are too...
I think it should be Frank or Mike, they're here all the time, and they know...
They maybe...
They know what the background on all this too, or Dave, it doesn't really matter, but I don't understand why it can't be somebody else.
So let's just say that everything comes back status quo. Are you going to be able to let this go then, would that satisfy your...
Yes.
What's status quo?
Well, with everything that's been produced so far, nothing more to come down. That's not asking much.
Obviously, I'm new to this whole thing, this is my first meeting and first exposure to this. It seems like there's a bit of inconsistency, because she was told in August she had everything, she got more stuff today, so that indicates that whatever she was told in August isn't actually true. Maybe it was an honest mistake, I don't know. I would be happy to assist if, unless someone else...
I think you would be the right person.
I'd be a better person to do it, but I just think we owe her something.
Obviously, so maybe I should not. I don't see where there's a problem with asking High Tech again, I don't know that you're going to get anything different.
Okay. So we need to make a kind of motion, or is it just something?
You had a motion on the floor, you can't ignore it.
There was no second.
So you didn't ask, oh? Thank you.
If your motion had died, there was no second, she's got the motion pending.
So we need a motion to go ahead and approve, they have, they look into High Tech, maybe as a second, opinion to see if there's, we do need a motion?
Well, be specific in whatever you're going to do, because let's get this thing over once and for all. If you're going to make a motion to have certain action taken, be specific on what it is, so the minutes will reflect exactly what you're directing somebody to do, because this individual making the appeal has indicated on, on this record that she is going to accept the results of that work product. So make sure you're clear on what that work product is. I mean, are you going to have Mr. Vincent work with, with High Tech? And they will sit down and they will go over the FOIA, and they will do a redo on this? They'll do a completely new search, and whatever the documents show, that's it, we're done.
Is it basically just for the letter, is that what you're saying, or is it for more documents, more emails?
Well, it would be nice to know that, do I actually have everything from the emails? Um, I mean, it would be nice to have both, because I'm not believing both have been produced. But if someone else looks into it, and they've checked with High Tech, and everything has been done, and that's what it is, and that's fine.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and have Dave Vincent, me with High Tech to follow up on this cross FOIA request, to make sure that all documentation is passed forward. And whatever findings that they come up with, then that'll be fine.
Support. You have a time period on that, so this doesn't languish?
Thirty days until the next, at the next meeting, Dave?
I'm happy to do it, I don't know what their timeframe will be, but I'm happy to be, to mark. Okay, okay.
Next meeting is going to be...
Once you give them thirty days, that gives them adequate opportunity, holidays are coming up, if High Tech's busy, gives them an opportunity, so you've got a shelf life on this, so within thirty days, whatever documents are generated, the party appealing, the FOIA request, production.
Are you going to have High Tech produce them again, or just kind of look at what has been given and kind of...
See what's missing.
See what's missing, or how? Take what was given, and then...
Take what was given and see what's missed.
Can we just make it our December 18th meeting, it's almost thirty days? Bring it to the next meeting, we can put it on the agenda.
Support.
Where's you getting Roxanne, you want me to lead that?
I have a motion by Philbrook, seconded by Giorgio, to approve Dave Vincent to work with High Tech to follow up on cross, cross this FOIA, to make sure all documents are produced, and have this completed by December 18th meeting.
And that the, that the cross will accept the results of the work product? Yep. Derek?
Yep.
Derek, please.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes.
Cliff Craft?
Yes.
Judge Giorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Dave, for doing that. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to item 8C. Planning Commission is owing, Planning Commission representative appointment. So this is the one, this is this... This is going to be our board representative. Yeah, so, basically, Mike Tremblay was our board liaison between the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. Mike did retire, or did basically resign, and moved out of the community. Since then, it's been the responsibility of Anne Marie Voist that sat between the PC and the board, until the general election of November 20th, which we just had. So at this point in time, Anne Marie is no longer going to be the rep between the PC and the board. We need to pick a member from our board to go ahead and sit on the PC as liaison. I, myself, cannot do it, it's a conflict of interest as a supervisor, so it would leave the four of you. I know we've spoke a little bit here and there, and I think that David possibly mentioned that you would be interested in the position.
I'm happy to serve in that role. Obviously, if anybody else wants it, the low man on the total poll here. Somebody wants to...
That's good.
So I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve Dave Vincent, to, or make appoint Dave Vincent as the liaison to the Planning Commission to work for the next four years, it would be November 20, 24 to, November 20th, 2024 to November 20th to 2028.
Support.
Or maybe Giorgio, is there any other discussion? Right, we get a roll call.
Treasurer Sokolich?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Treasurer Giorgio?
Yes.
Cliff Craft?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes. Thanks, Steve. Always, it's really having you come on like that, and you, we're electing you for all these things, and so... See, we can find a couple other things for you before the end of the meeting. Let's move on to items 8D, our Planning Commission reappointment. Also, we did have a, I don't know how I'm going to make this. So we had a member of our Planning Commission, we received a letter of resignation from Ed Coopas, want to thank him for all his time and dedication he had put onto the board. At the transition point, Darryl Blalock has sat on the Planning Commission in Mike Tremblay's vacated spot since, I think it's been June six months, if you take. And when Dave would be coming to the Planning Commission, Darryl would actually have to step off, because Dave would be taking that spot that Darryl Blalock is currently filling, which is Mike Tremblay's vacated spot. Kind of complicated. So Darryl would no longer be on the Planning Commission, but we have a vacancy that's opened up from Ed Coopas. We did receive a letter of resignation. In order to fill that spot, I would just, as Darryl has been on the Planning Commission, he's been doing a great job, I would recommend, make the recommendation to appoint Darryl Blalock to fill Ed Coopas' unexpired term, which I know I'm not going to, not going to handle that for some reason. He goes to 2020, Danny, you know the date?
Three year? Yeah, three years.
What?
So 2024 to 2026.
Yeah, he's got an unexpired term, it would be to fill that unexpired term. So whatever Ed Coopas' unexpired term is, from today till expiration date, it's on file.
We consider several people in their file that were interested in this position.
So the process is already, Mr. Blalock has already gone through the process, this board has even looked at the recommendation from the members of the Planning Commission that did interview Mr. Blalock, and he did bring that recommendation to the board, and the board did approve to have Darryl Blalock, Blalock sit on the Planning Commission. So technically, we don't really have, even though there is a vacancy opening up, we still have a member that is currently there. And there's no, I mean, no reason why we would need another interview process for another new member, so... Anybody disagree?
No. Sounds...
So I have, I did make a motion to appoint Darryl Blalock to the Planning Commission. I just don't have a...
I'm just looking at our, what's on the website. Is it saying, it says it's random? And he's going to be replacing, who did you say, Randy?
Ed.
Ed.
Ed Coopas.
Ed Coopas. He was going to be through June of 2026. That's what it says on the website.
So appoint Darryl Blalock to the unexpired term of Ed Coopas from November 20th to 2024 to June of 2026.
June 30th of 2026.
Reported by Giorgio?
Yep.
There's no other discussion, may we get a roll call, please?
Treasurer Giorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Cliff Craft?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes. One question for the attorney, going to go back one step. Dave Vincent's son is also on the Planning Commission as the chair. I think that this has been asked, that there's no conflict of interest there, to have a father and son sit on the same committee, you know?
I don't see what the conflict would be.
I asked MTA, they said no.
Pardon?
I asked MTA and they said there was no conflict, so...
They got it right.
Yeah.
Would there be any reason why we would frown on that at all, or is there any history, or?
I don't see one.
Maybe they don't get along.
There's no problem there. I, I don't see any conflict. Conflicts are typically financial in nature, and certainly there wouldn't be, like, two members of the same family sitting on board. I mean, there's a, there's a history in, in the municipal law dating when, when board members would take over, they would have their spouses as deputies. This used to happen all the time back in the eighties in McComb County, and those weren't legal conflicts, so certainly having a father and son on the planning commission would not.
Okay, we'll move on to item 8E, our bimonthly payroll review.
We have that agreement where Teresa was going to do the, she might still want to do it, and the second person looking at the...
Have you done any of that at all yet?
Yeah, I get the, I get the payroll stuff, and I would review it, I have some questions sometimes, but they were answered submission.
Okay, so we need somebody to replace your position doing that.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dorothy to review the biweekly payrolls.
Why wouldn't it fall under the treasurer?
I don't care, Frank.
Okay, good. I make a motion that I, the treasurer's office reviewed payroll. Okay. That's why she got quick.
Well, I don't mind, I thought Dorothy needed a job. I don't mind doing it, but...
Ladies, I'm really tired of listening, I apologize.
What's your concern about everything, the extra hours?
That's fine, go ahead.
Susan made a motion to go ahead and have Dorothy Sokolich do the...
I trust Dorothy.
And then I'll support it. So we don't have any other discussion, we can, well, thanks, Dorothy, because... Teresa, thanks for doing it.
No problem.
We get a roll call, please, Roxanne?
Sure. Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes.
Cliff Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer Giorgio?
Yes.
Motion carries. There was still the question, did we ever get the paychecks more transparent as far as the hours, did that ever get? You know, what's in their banks?
Yeah, well, she, she did as much as she could, I think, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about all the transparency on the paychecks, with vacations, and all that, it never got done as far as I... I think I checked like three weeks ago.
You should ask her about it.
I shouldn't have to ask her. The Board made a decision that this be done, and she works for you, so you should have been following up to find out if it's been done.
She had, and there was one thing, as far as I knew, that she couldn't do.
Okay, then you should have reported that to the Board, Susan. I would think. Does that make sense, or no? Or am I crazy?
All right, well, look, I just asked.
Yeah, I just asked.
So is it gonna be done, or what's the status?
You tell me, and I'll be sure it's done.
Maybe I will. I'll try to do your job.
And we'll move on to item 8F, which is the Macomb Agricultural PDR Committee. I feel bad Kenny Ben here. I got Kenny Cook from the Macomb PDR Committee. You all stiffened up, Ken.
Good evening, Board members. I'm the current Chair for Macomb PDR Committee, and which Bruce Township is a member. And we've got applicant from Bruce Township, Mark Falker, going to reapply again. And part of the package for the grant writing is community support and that for the initiative. And there's where I'm just asking if yous would renew your pledge that if parcel in PDR Committee groups is accepted by the state, that yous be willing to put some money towards it. It's not putting money up front now, but if we get the completion and sign in that, it could be about... We're looking at the 2025 cycle, so it could be a year, two years from 2025 before the paperwork gets signed, if we're fortunate to get one accepted. And he had a copy from what yous did the previous time, which I think was maybe two years ago, and just asking for renewing that.
We renew it every year. That was approved in 2024, so we're renewing it for 2025. The $500 pledge.
Correct.
The $500 pledge is for the new people, basically it's for... And we do have a farm or piece of property that is accepted in one of the six communities that we all represent. We would donate, we would give a pledge of $500 to go ahead and help...
Help purchase that developmental rights.
Right. And we had one last year at the First Knoll Farm in Richmond.
Richmond.
It looks like we have two applications this year where Mark has applied every year since, but his score is higher this year, so it looks like we're gonna have possibly Mark's property approved.
I'm not going that far, but it's statewide, but we're doing our darnedest and best to do what we can. And like, part of the state's scoring sheet is the community's commitment to it. Not that you're just sitting on the sideline with your hand out, you're willing with your other hand to put something towards it, like any other type of grants you apply for. They're looking for some matching funds or funds to go into the pot.
Yeah, I know, assist with our rural development, keeping our farm lands and helping support the idea. That, I know with the First Knoll Farm that they did, since it was in Richmond, Richmond did pledge a hundred, what, they pledged a thousand dollars. Is that a 500?
Right.
I know that we don't have that on our paper, but maybe that somebody can... Not gonna happen. This won't happen overnight. We can still approve the 500 right now as presented, as the paper presented. When you think that the, if this is say, that knock on wood, that Falker's property does get accepted, we're looking at 2026, maybe?
At the earliest, because again, we're dealing with state government, and there's a whole bunch of hoops and paperwork and title work and search and that to be done and stuff, because the First Knoll one was done this year in 2024, but it got approved, accepted by the state in January of 2022.
And we're looking to submit that application ourselves. It's not something that we would normally do, but it does help with the ratings, and we would have Jeff Schroeder from Macomb County, what do you call?
Planning and Economic Development Department of Macomb County.
Our clerk's office as far as submitting that paperwork.
Right, because we've been doing it as one group before, but then some other PDR programs in the state. To be in the county, but those townships are submitting their own, but still claiming to have an intergovernmental agreement, which we have with the six townships. So the state has a limit of one applicant being accepted from each program. Well, we've been submitting two, and sometimes barely just getting one, because the other ones got kicked out because we already got accepted. So now we're looking at each township, Richmond and Bruce, submitting it on their own to count as each one separate program. And keep our fingers crossed if we can get two of them picked out of it. So it's, like I like to say, working within the system for the best benefit we can get. And again, Jeff Schroeder's been doing this for four parcels that we got accepted already, and we're working with the clerk's office. He'd be doing all the paperwork and that. Some of it might need the Bruce Township letterhead on it to be submitted in, and then coming from Bruce Township, being emailed to the state agency. But it's all cut and paste or copy or forward or whatever, but legwork and that would be done by Jeff Schroeder. So...
Appraisal fees have already been paid on the property, but we're looking at possibly a closing cost that the township would have to pay. Rough numbers around $2,000, $2,500.
Or it could be less, but the state has a program, if Bruce Township got accepted, that the state would reimburse some of the closing costs for the first two or three parcels that got accepted from the submitting program. So that means if Falker's got accepted, yes, Bruce Township would be asked to pay the closing costs, but then after closing costs, they could resubmit to the state for reimbursement for that, and possibly any one more or two more parcels after that, if Bruce Township happened to get some applicants.
They'll reimburse up to three, and we right now, technically, I don't know, Mark's property back, I don't know how long, but was one, number one, and we still have two more reimbursements possibly from the state. I know Mark...
Well, you're right, but this is technically Bruce Township's first on their own, so that would count as your first time.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve as presented, the $500 pledge. If one of the six communities gets accepted, the PDR program, the state of Michigan, this is for the state, not federal, right?
Right, it's for, it's called the Michigan Agricultural Preservation Fund Board. So just basically on paper, possibly with Bruce Township's letterhead stating, we're willing to do this if things pan out.
I just, I'm gonna make my motion to approve the renewal of the Bruce Township pledge of $500 for the 2025 Michigan Agricultural Preservation Grant. Then we can work on that later, Dave.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any second?
Second.
Second, I think, Dorothy? Any other discussions? Anybody have any questions for Ken or...
If I could ask possibly, Mr. Chairman, maybe another motion saying to instruct the clerk to do the process for submitting the grant... No, for submitting the grant to the Michigan Agricultural Preservation Fund Board, that it's on record, the Board approved doing the application. Yous just...
I know she's worried because she has, I know she's got a lot of things going on, obviously.
Don't worry.
Jeff's gonna take care of everything, right?
The clerk and me are gonna become good friends. No. The clerk from Richmond Township, Kathy LaFontaine's been through this, and she's willing to offer help and guidance, and Jeff's got some paperwork from all the other times Mark's application was submitted. So like I say, just a matter of copying and... We ain't gonna let you hang, trust me.
Motion to have the clerk work to submit the paperwork to the Michigan, is there the Macomb Agriculture?
No, no, to the Michigan Agricultural Preservation Fund Grant Cycle.
Exactly what I wanted to say.
For the 2025 cycle. I know it's a long word, and I didn't come up with it.
Motion is supported by Dorothy. Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please?
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes. Thanks, Ken. Appreciate you taking the time on.
That's okay, and if I could get a copy of whatever for the pledge, so we can submit it, that'd be great.
Need a copy of the minutes when they're done?
Okay.
The minutes won't be actually proven until our next meeting, but we can send you a draft possibly?
Well, there'll still be time if you can, because it's either the end of January or beginning part of January when deadline is for submitting applications. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on to item 8G, the MISD, Michigan Intermediate School District Summer Tax Levy. Is that you, Susan? Is that your name on that?
I'll make a motion to approve Michigan Intermediate School District Tax Collection Resolution as presented.
Support, or... Do you argue your support? There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please? This is basically just...
For summer tax collection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an annual, annual.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
And you for my...
Yes. Move on to item 8H, which is the intern help for the tax season. Thank you.
Yeah, with tax season coming, and now that we collect utility bills on a monthly basis, requesting that bring a high school student in to work during the tax collection season between December 1st till the last day of February, help with the processing papers.
Do we have, do we have that position available on our... Is it back in our unit, or is it kind of upstream from the Board?
No. Intern help with a high school student, like they do during the summer months with assessing when they go out and take pictures. I'd rather not go to a part-time, because that, you know, that involves benefits, you know, some vacation time, all that stuff, and I don't feel the need for it as a long period of time.
Is this gonna be set up kinda like the part-time assessing?
Yeah, like, like assessing uses the high school students in the summer.
I'm sure there's a...
We set up the same way.
I'm sure there's a room.
You're being disruptive.
I'm sorry, you are. I'm sure there's a room.
Get some water, please.
I think you should go to a room. I'm sorry, Supervisor, I'm trying to pay attention to the Board, and they keep talking, and I've asked them to keep it down.
Can we keep it quiet so people can hear what's going on? You know, our lights are not working great, so thank you.
Will this be through February 28th?
Yes. Yeah, throughout the tax collection season.
So there's two tax collection seasons?
There is, but I'm asking for the winter.
Summer right now, yeah.
And how many hours are we talking?
Probably, probably about 20 hours a week.
Rate of pay?
Whenever they pay the high school students coming in during the taxes, assessing, what is it? $16?
Yes, it was $16. But we had, we had an agreement that anybody had to be 18, so...
I don't know, do they have to?
Drive, is it, or is it?
I think it's the drive, isn't it?
Well, we said in one of the meetings you had to be 18, so they didn't abide by it, but that was...
I don't know how it's to an intern.
Do you guys like a pull-up at the high school? Because we just have a program that you can pull in front?
I think so, yeah. I mean, that's how they...
What about those two kids that have been helping out?
They're on a summer, they're on a program. Yeah, it's a work-based learning program, so they're just all... And I thought the 18 was really just for driving.
That's what Rhonda said.
Well, that's what I was saying.
All right, well, we'll look at the age, because I don't know how we're gonna get it, if not that many high schools do this, it's gonna be 18, you know, just term of age.
Right.
Okay. Like, as far as hours, I would bring my high school kids, like...
Yeah, probably after school, till like four, like noon to four or something. Five days a week, four days a week, or three, three or four days a week. It's crucial during the first week of the month. Again, utility payments being on a monthly basis now, we could swap, and then tax collection season, you know, community is growing.
People are afraid of it sooner, so they come so...
They could. They could come in soon, or maybe a week or so, but...
First, real quick, I think something was... Yes, you know, it's what you're saying, because something was brought up when I was sitting up there the last few months. If you bring someone in from the high school, they have, they can't have more than a certain amount of hours when you add in their schooling hours plus the time you're having them work. Isn't that correct? So double check on that, because when you were saying 20 hours, that might exceed their, the hours that they're at school when you add it, the hour... Yes, okay.
So...
Yeah. Okay.
That's exceed 15, maybe?
I'll check.
You want to put a motion?
I put a, make a motion for to hire for intern purposes, an intern help for tax purposes during the month of December, January, and February, high school student, no more than 15 hours a week. Rate of pay or whatever, we pay the students in the summer, I think it's $16 an hour. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah. I will, I'll support, second it. Do you have somebody of mine who's just gotta go to the school with the, you know, like, Osean to school?
Yeah, I have to go to school.
Eva, Osean, and...
Yeah, I do have somebody of mine also, Rob.
Riley might be a good source. She's a high school student.
Okay, yep, support it. There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes.
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to item 8I, which is filling the partner supervisor. I'll just bend myself, I'll stay on if there's no objections for renewal from 11/2024 to 11/2028.
Support.
Support, my friend. Any discussion? Can we get a roll call, please?
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Yes. Move on to items 8J, which is the ordinance enforcement officer. Again, that was myself, I've been doing it currently. There's no objections, I'll stay on from 11/2024 to 11/20 of 2028. Support by Vincent? There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call?
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes. Item 7K, which is the planning zoning administrator. Again, it's been my job. I'll stay on it on that position also, if you guys will repeat me, from 11/2024 to 11/2028.
Support.
Support by you, Giorgio. There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Philbrook?
Yes.
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Justice Vincent?
Yes.
Justice Sokolich?
Yes.
Item 7L, this?
Lauren did that.
Did that, and then Amory did that, and it's the same as our planning commission, planning commission administrator.
That's planning and zoning. zoning, we're the administrator.
So it covered both of them in the one, we need to have a second motion for zoning administrators.[1783.71] So it covered both of them in the one. We need to have a second motion for zoning administrator as well. I guess we're good, actually. We covered both.
Yeah.
We're good.
Yeah.
Move on to items, item eight N would be the FOIA coordinator, which is Susan has been doing all along. And I would support her continuing to go from 11, 2024 to 11 of 2028.
Tori?
Support by Sokolich. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Philbert?
Yes.
Clerk Craft?
Yes.
Treasurer DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Trustee Sokolich?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes. I think that's all of them, right?
The only one we didn't do was the past year, but yeah, it's open-ended and he, so we did some of the last one, it's Mark Falker.
I don't think we have fence fee anymore. I think it's in building, just for, fence permits and it goes for inspections.
Book that up.
It's, it's open-ended. It doesn't expire.
Move on to communications. Chief, why don't you start us off? Also, thank you. Nothing. Congratulations. About your open house. How'd the open house go? Yeah, that was, we haven't had a meeting since then. You know, I don't recall if we did or not.
Yes, we did.
Abe, you got something for communication?
I don't. I guess we're probably, but first I have a question about the master plan review. Somebody was supposed to check the ground, make sure that one's, we're supposed to continue on the 1,000 if anything available. Does anybody do it?
I thought I did. I think there was an issue, but I can check again. I think I did.
80% voter turnout, thanks to everybody who wrote it. Civic Plus, we talked about last month. Chris is working on it, working on the contracts, so it'll probably be on the general for next month. Were we doing any building updates that we got put out? Got some of those estimates and are we just unrobin?
No, we've kind of been doing stuff. Obviously, we did get the parking lot and the painting and the caulking and there's some, we just come back and do a more caulking, but we've done a lot with the fire department. Some stuff to get done before winter, but now we can keep going along with it. Absolutely.
I was wondering if we could maybe do some workshops to kind of talk about things that are maybe coming up during the year, just kind of get out a few things.
Yeah, we've got.
I agree. Should do a couple different workshops.
I know that has to be posted because we'd all be meeting, so. We also talked about all employees entering the employee door when they get here in the morning. That was something we discussed in the past, that we'd like to make sure that we're enforcing that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Great job on the election. It's a great turnout. Helping everyone without incidents, so it's perfect. I'll go next. Frank, were you gonna talk about traffic light?
No, go ahead.
I just wanna say that the traffic light, the traffic's been open on 32 Mile and Mound. Unfortunately, the mast arms that hold the traffic light up are on back orders, so they're not gonna come until springtime. But they did say they were gonna do all the infrastructure, get the roadway opened up. They're gonna run off the blinking lights until the mast arms come in. Still gonna be a lot better than what it was and hopefully it'll be safer for the community, but can't wait.
So the blinking lights over there, they're just keeping them?
They didn't have, they didn't say anything about the mast arm down. They can tell two months into the project that the mast arm's gonna be on back order. They did give us the option and before the job started from Washington Township and myself, that they could hang the traffic lights from cables or like from wires like they do. Or we could use the mast arms if we decided to go with the mast arms instead of the cables. And we were not aware that they're gonna be on back order, but it does look a little bit more formal, it's a little bit cleaner look, so that's what we decided to go with the mast arms. Something like you'd see at the corner 32, a faint like it's the same kind of lighting system. Tree, we have Christmas tree lighting on. We got to mention the Parks and Rec. It's at December 5th and the parade, do you have? It is December 5th.
Yeah. In the village, yeah.
It's a great time, Santa Claus. Parks and Rec does a great job of putting that on. It'll be at the Village Park in Romeo, and then there'll be a parade along Main Street. And it goes from, it starts out at Washington Street and goes all the way to the park. Santa comes in and it's like. Quick question, and regarding the scanning, are we gonna do scanning anymore? It's like building, they have two drawers in building and one drawer and painting and someone could possibly be using it. We have plenty for that. And what about the, yeah, I guess that's it. That's it. Frank?
Tax bills will be going out next week and the tax bill will be also a newsletter and a schedule of all the recycling dates for the year of 2025. We'll be having a blood Red Cross, we wanna give blood donations on Thursday, December 5th. We also have a bin out there from R and E Family, R and E Family Foundation. They collect gifts, toys and stuff for the less fortunate in the community. So you're welcome to bring a gift wrapped or unwrapped, however you like, and they come and pick it up every couple of weeks. And that's it. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Oh, and I agree with Dorothy, we need to have some workshops. I think we should have some budget workshops every now and then just to find out where we're at, where we're going, where we need to be. And wouldn't it hurt to have like a building workshop, anything that goes on this building that we can need to talk about? Whether it be remodeling or, or goals for the year or manpower issues, all that stuff.
Some of that stuff we can cover.
We should maybe do it during the day, since you guys are here anyway, if Dave's available, and I am, usually we do schedule them. That way you don't have to come here at night or. Come up with some dates and.
Okay, all right.
Dorothy, what do you got?
Welcome to both of you.
That's it. Thanks for going easy.
I forgot to say thanks to everybody that came out for the Veterans Memorial. We had a great turnout. I think there's probably hosted 60 people. The VFW, the post over here on New Vic did a great job. Just thanks for the turnout. It was nice, actually. And then, nobody's got anything else for this board to discuss, so I'm making a motion to adjourn at 8:07 PM. Support. Aye. Thanks, everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.